This time I will call to order the York County Transportation Committee for December 1st, 2025. The first item for us to consider is County Transportation Committee to approve the reallocation of Economic Development C-Funds in the amount of $350,000 from Kings Ridge Drive to Lazy Hawk Road. Mr. Hampton?
Good evening. I have a few slides to go over this to kind of give you, bring you up to speed for this request. So you can see on the screen here, there's a map showing kind of an aerial view. I've called out the intersection in question. This is near I-77 and Mountain Holly Road, or also known as Highway 901, exit 73 off I-77. This is related to some of the development that's gone on down on Lazy Hawk. Actually, I can do the next slide. So here is what we are wanting to do as far as improvement-wise. The lines in blue there are some intersection improvements we want to, that have been identified at Lazy Hawk and Mountain Holly Road intersection. Essentially, two tractor-trailers can't leave. One can't leave the site or leave Lazy Hawk, and one can't turn into Lazy Hawk at the same time. So the improvement is more of a geometric improvement to widen out the intersection some to allow those turning movements to be able to take place. We also want to repave a portion of Lazy Hawk Road, which is a section in red there. There is, if you, you can kind of tell if you look at the screen, you can see the pavement condition can change as you go further down Lazy Hawk. A portion of Lazy Hawk was repaved recently down to Caterpillar Drive, so this would kind of fill in that gap of missing new pavement there from the current section that's been repaved up to the intersection. It would all be lumped in as one project. And this is just kind of a planned view of the improvements that were shown that were recommending to be done at the Lazy Hawk intersection. You can see just a little bit of widening there to better accommodate those truck turning movements at the location. Right now, we're looking at a total cost estimate around $500, $550,000. And that is going to be made up of several different funding contributions on here. We have the Caris Coal, the previous developer, had a TIA funding contribution toward roadway improvements. Also received a grant from, through Project Unagi. There's $100,000 tax credit from AT&amp;T. And then the last funding source that we're asking for approval tonight is to come from the Economic Development C-Funds. There is a previous project that there is $350,000 remaining left over from an ED project. We're just asking to reallocate that funding. I do realize that's a good bit more than what we anticipate will be needed, but by shifting that full amount, we'll close, officially close that project out, then any money remaining from this project can be put back into the unallocated Economic Development C-Fund account once this project is complete.
Thank you, sir.
We are intending to move forward in 2026 with construction. I believe there's a timeline where that AT&amp;T grant has to be spent and the work has to be completed. So we are looking to get this work, possibly spring, most likely summer for this work is what we're targeting for the completion.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for staff?
Were we prepared, when we approve the project over on Lazy Hawk, will we expect them to make these improvements, or will we just looking to do the ones out on 901?
I know the, the improvements on Lazy Hawk have been planned all along, going back to Caris Coal two or three years ago, I believe. It's just we've been able, trying to come up with the additional funding to be able to complete the improvements. So now through the couple of grants that we've gotten, we feel like now's a good time to move forward with it.
Yes, and on a previous agenda, y'all approved us working with AT&amp;T and asking for the additional $100,000. So on this agenda later tonight is the acceptance of that $100,000 from AT&amp;T. So we're trying to time this, this work, once we get the $100,000 to go and get the work done this year. That $100,000 got us very close. We didn't want to wait for one more development to get the last $115,000. We thought it was worth going to get this work done now.
I'll say this, that this, this benefits my district, but I'll be honest with you. I was expecting this to probably go through a different committee process and for this not to be approved. This route, I'll tell you that there is, anyone who rides over Lazy Hawk Road and goes to look at what the trucks will be experiencing at that intersection, it does not take a rocket scientist to see that if you don't have these improvements, it will be a nightmare. At the same time, I think, I think our developers should be paying the full freight on that. So I have mixed emotions about this. At the same time, there is funding that's available to match what, what the developers are putting forward, and that's where we're at.
I know we had some extensive talks about the road situation. I mainly remember what was going on out on 901, not so much that was on the Lazy Hawk Road.
Not in one is right there. Not in one is right where it makes that intersection and the trucks that exit out of that way. If they do not have these three, if they don't have this, this path, what you're going to have is...
A cluster, in and out.
Thank you.
In and out.
Good word.
And based on the AT&amp;T funding, as Patrick shared, if we're going to utilize the $100,000 we're getting from AT&amp;T, we think we need to move now on this.
I, I am all for us finding better ways to make the developers pay for this full freight. But this came up and didn't go through the committees, and if they don't have these improvements, it will make it worse. That's where I'm at personally. Any other questions for staff?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Do you want a motion?
We need a motion.
All right. Make a motion that the Transportation Committee approve the reallocation of Economic Development C-Funds in the amount of $350,000 from Kings Ridge Drive to Lazy Hawk Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll reiterate it. I'm supporting this because I feel like I have no other choice. I think developers should be paying this full freight. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. That ends and concludes our Transportation Committee meeting. At this time, I will call to order the December 1st, 2025 York County Council meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to recognize the Honorable Tom Aldette from District 1, who will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together today in the spirit of unity and purpose. We ask your wisdom to guide our discussion, your peace to keep our hearts open, your grace to help us work together for the good of all. Bless each person here with clarity of thought, respect for one another, share the common commitment of truth and fairness. May our decision today sow seeds of hope and progress for our community. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one oath of office tonight that looks like it's been rescheduled. So we do not have, we do not have the oath of office. Before we get into our appearances, it's my understanding that we have a motion to entertain, a motion to approve the public hearings out of order to allow for item number nine to appear as number one on the agenda. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move that up in order. Our appearances tonight are the Governor, Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. That's a lot of important words there.
Yes, madam chair, we're, we're excited about this, and I asked for the budget team to, to come forward real quick. What I wanted to share with y'all, this is a really big deal. When y'all hired me, one of the things y'all asked for was a strategic plan. We also talked a lot about a, a budget book, right? So the importance of an adopted budget and a budget book is really all about accountability and telling our story. This is what y'all approve, and this is how you set our focuses for the upcoming year. One of the things that in, in the local government budget world, which there is a local government budget world, I'm proud to say that, there's, there's the Government Finance Officers Association. And y'all have heard about this group, because we do win awards through our finance department for this, through this group sometimes. It's the National Association of Finance Officers. One thing they do is they have peers from across the country who review budget documents and rate them. And you can get an award if you meet all the important criteria they state. Typically, this takes a number of years to do. This was the first actual budget book we've done at York County, and the first time it was submitted. I know when we put it in, we thought we'd get some good feedback and we'd make additions. But, but I'm proud to say that in our first try, we got the distinguished budget presentation award from GFOA. And I think that has a lot to do with the leadership of our budget director, Trish Startup, and her team. There was a cross-departmental collaboration that happened to create this budget book for the first time. And so I want Trish to recognize all those departments. Obviously, finance was involved, economic development, the manager's office, and even HR. And that's really important to us, is whenever you do something for the first time, you need to get everybody involved, and you need to make sure that it's perfect. And so I'm so thankful for Trish's leadership on this, but with that, I wanted to give her the chance to share a couple things.
Sure, thank you. We're excited to stand before you tonight and just to congratulate those who are a part of this. I want to thank all the assistant county managers for what they did to help with this process, but also it was a, a large cross-departmental effort with Ashley from HR, and then Emily, who's standing behind me, as well as Jose from Economic Development. And specifically from Finance, Mr. Madden helped, as well as Becky Esper and Gar Sawyer. And so without them, it wouldn't have been possible for us to even create the budget book. I want to thank you all for letting us bring something fresh and new to you that you hadn't seen before. But when the county manager came to me, he said, he gave me a vision, and I caught wind of it, that we really wanted to tell York County's story. How can we best use the budget book, which is the largest communication tool we have to tell York County's story? And so with that, I went and asked department directors if I could utilize their staff that I knew had specific talents in specific areas to take this vision and make it come to fruition, which they did. And when I look back at the budget book and when we even use it today, I think about the values that we just, we just voted on as employees for our organization, and those circle around excellence through professionalism. And that's exactly what the budget book is. It's excellence through professionalism. And now, we just actually kicked off the FY '27 budget process today. So we will continue to enhance this budget book even further and continue to submit the award. And like the county manager said, they gave us feedback, and we will incorporate that into the budget book. And this year, council will see something as well. So thank you all for your support. Thank you, management, for your support and giving us the opportunity to run with a vision and tell York County's story. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Startup, and we appreciate staff putting that forward and making sure that, that everything that we do with our budget process is transparent and understandable to our community, who is the ones who ultimately bear the responsibility for our budget. Thank you, ma'am. We do now move to our public forum session. This is an opportunity for us to hear from folks in the community who want to present something to the council that is within our jurisdictional limits. And we do have some rules. We ask that you, this is an opportunity for us to listen, not to respond back. So if you're going to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to things that are related to jurisdictional issues, that you not call out individual members, because this is not a chance that we, we're here to defend ourselves. If you want to do that, that's at the public hearing session. The way the public hearing session works is that when we call a public hearing, we, we have many tonight. We have nine, even though we've asked to reduce the public hearing numbers. We still have nine tonight. Hopefully, hopefully those aren't going to be controversial. But if you are here for a public hearing item, we're going to ask that your comments wait until the public hearing item. That way, they are associated with the content of the item that we're considering. If you're here for something that is outside public hearing, we certainly will hear your, hear what you have to say. Please don't call out any individual members. If you will pay attention to the screen, that we hope works tonight. When two minutes is up, if you will cut off your comments, then I don't have to cut you off, and I don't appear to be rude, and I enjoy that. So if you will pay attention to the screen, then I don't have to. If you come forward, please state your name and give your address first before you start talking. And once you start talking, the time will start. First up is Brian Grecon. Please excuse if I mutilate your name.
You were very close for a first try. Brian Grecon. I live at 370 Mile Side Way in Fort Mill. I'm a chemical engineer by training, and I've worked in hazardous chemical manufacturing environments. My experience says that with up to 250 tons of hazardous materials stored on-site at Sylfab, they can't possibly have thought of everything that can go wrong. Otherwise, we wouldn't need warning systems and response plans, would we? Of particular interest to me are vapor clouds, because they're toxic or explosive, and they're mobile, and they may have a duration when something like a tank is leaking. With the 10 mile an hour breeze, there's only one minute for the Flint Hill schools to fully respond to a hazard that comes out of Sylfab. One minute goes very quickly. The Louvre robbery last month, in October, in fact. Seven minutes for a world-class safety system to respond to the hazard. At Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas, there were three minutes between the time a 911 call was made and the classrooms were locked down. It's impossible for the Flint Hill schools to respond in one minute. And that doesn't even address bus lines, carpool lines, outdoor sports, the senior center across the street, nearby apartments. Response plans are clearly not the solution to this problem. You need to avoid the problem in the first place, which brings us to responsibility and authority. The nearest neighbor to Sylfab, the Fort Mill School Board, has responsibility for student safety, but doesn't think it has the authority to act. The good news is, you do have the authority to act by listening to your own zoning board. Because when responsibility and authority work together, they can move mountains. They can even move Sylfab. Sylfab's not light industrial. I know it, you know it. Please move Sylfab. You've heard my thoughts. My prayer is that you listen to your zoning board and respond accordingly. Otherwise, I fear there will come a time in the future when you're giving your thoughts and prayers to the victims of a catastrophe at Sylfab. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Scott Kokenour.
Hey, everybody. Scott Kokenour, 122 West Oak Street in beautiful Whiteville Park neighborhood of downtown Fort Mill. Speaking of downtown Fort Mill, Thursday night from 5 to 8, we're going to light the Christmas tree in the Walkin Park, and then Saturday at 11 o'clock, we're going to have our parade. So we invite everybody to come downtown Fort Mill for some holiday cheer and events, great things going on, so. And we'd like to recognize Catawba Ridge High School Marching Band. They did have the opportunity to perform at the Macy Day Parade. I know the kids are all excited about that. It was a great, great opportunity for the high school kids in our area and stuff, so. I did take the time the other day to attend a planning about a golf cart situ, or what we're talking about with golf carts in York County. I have a golf cart, and I'm the proud owner of LSV. Just paid my 500 and something dollars in property tax, so I could drive it at night. So that's why I was there the other night. I would like to ask our sheriff's department to get with our municipalities. And I think it is a good idea to look at it as a whole situation versus a one-off community. I just don't think this council should be looking at one-off community takeoffs, because if we do, you're going to be hit with numerous, numerous ones of them, so. But it was a great opportunity to hear that conversation and go on from there, so. And consent agenda, believe it or not, I'm here to speak and not ask you to pull anything out. Item number four, I'm here to support again, and since I did speak about Project Dinger, the fee in lieu of, anyway, I'm glad that they have the opportunity to participate in the fee of lieu of, because their property taxes in North Carolina would be about a third of what they are in the Fort Mill School District. So this gives them an opportunity to perform, enhance our community, and everything along that line. So once again, thank everyone for what you do, and have a great holiday season.
Thank you, sir. I know I'm going to mess this one up. Vladimir Drobliff, sorry, that last one, I couldn't get it.
Hi, members of the council. I'm Vladimir Drobliff.
Wait, pronounce that last name again.
Vladimir Drobliff.
Drobliff?
Yes.
Okay.
463 Cranbourne Chase, Fort Mill. Good evening, council members. I'm here tonight to ask each of you a couple of questions. What is the cost of a citizen? When you approved a 30-year fee in lieu of tax deal for Sylfab Solar, you answered that question for every person in a county. You traded the safety of 53,000 residents who live near the hazardous site with a three-mile radius for about $1.4 million in tax, a year in tax revenue. If we divide that out, that boils down to $26.41. $26 for the right to breathe the clean air. $26 for the safety of our children in schools. $26 for our drinking water. Sylfab's own reports show tanks of toxic and flammable materials stored just a few hundred feet from homes and schools. That's not clean energy. That's a high-hazard industrial plant placed in the middle of community. You promised this project would bring 800 local jobs, yet Sylfab postings are offering sponsorship for visas, which means they're bringing people from abroad as opposed to local citizens. So I asked you directly whether, where are the local jobs you promised our citizens? You call that economic development? We call it betrayal of public trust. No tax break is worth health of 53,000 people. No amount of revenue is worth even one child's safety, not even talking about 2,200. Progress is not measured in dollars. It's measured in people. And my second question to you would be, would you allow Sylfab next to your backyard or near the school where your children are going? If the answer is no, then this is not a honest mistake. This is a conscious choice along the Lord Farquhar lines. Some of you may die, but this is a sacrifice I am willing to make. And the people of York County were here tonight to remind you that you are representing the entire county, not Rock Hill, not York, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Keep that in mind, please.
I do want to make sure that, that folks are reminded that this matter is currently in litigation. The council did not decide a zoning issue. The council decided an economic development incentive program. We did not decide a zoning issue, and that zoning issue is currently before the Circuit Court, which is the appropriate next step from the Zoning Board of Appeals, who made a decision on the zoning issue. So just to be clear on the process on that. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. As amended, we will begin with item number nine. Counsel to conduct a public hearing and provide third reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning code of the County of York by amending Subchapter C Use Regulation Part II, Table 155.271-2, in order to change the designation of hotels and motels from permitted uses to conditional uses in zoning districts, GCOAB, TMU, and UD, and to correspondingly add new sections 3.40 and Subchapter C Use Regulations Part III, conditional and special exception uses in order to provide regulations regarding extended stays at hotels and motels, definitions, length of stay requirements, exceptions thereto, establish use regulations, restrictions, excuse me, establish registration, property maintenance, and compliance requirements, fees and penalties, county departmental coordination regarding enforcement and other matters related thereto. Do we have anyone who is here to speak against this matter? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, there was a lot of effort and work put into this. And again, it's, it's all about understanding the, the needs and how we can support our law enforcement officers in making this community safe. I think this is a nice step forward in order to address some of the concerns that we saw in the past and move forward and strengthen and make this community even safer. So looking forward to getting this passed. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I will say that my understanding is that this ordinance will make it consistent with our municipalities, which is important when we provide consistent, consistency throughout the county and how we deal with, with regulations of this sort. So to me, this, this creates consistency throughout the county that all of the county is supportive of. And I do appreciate our sheriff, Braden, for the work that he's put into this and that is consistent with the original intent and is not, is not changed in any way by some of the recommendations. Is that correct, management? This is...
Yes, that is correct.
...how it was presented to, to our committee and from the sheriff originally?
Yes.
All right. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We move now to the next item under public hearing. Counsel to conduct a public hearing and to provide third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, the County and Costco Wholesale Corporation, a company previously identified as project sample acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and other project investors collectively the company to provide for certain infrastructure credits in connection with the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, collectively the project to the benefits of a multi-county industrial park and certain infrastructure credits made available to the count, to the company and project and other matters related thereto. Is there anything from management before we move forward?
Not at this time, as we presented at the last meeting.
My understanding is that, that the PowerPoint presentation that was presented to council, that is the information that was provided from the company, is that accurate?
Yes, madam chair.
All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request?
Hey, I'm Tim Steele. I reside at 2579 Catawba Church Road. Thank you, council, for your time, energy, and effort that you put into our county to make it what it is today. I realize that our tax structure, as far as bringing commercial companies into our county, can be a challenge as compared to Mecklenburg County. But as, I also realize that we have something that Mecklenburg County and other surrounding areas don't have to offer Costco, that is location, location, location. This I-77 and Porter Road location is zoned industrial and is a large 100... and is a large 170-acre tract of land and is right off the interstate. Those three things combined makes it very lucrative for any corporation and hard to find in other areas. Given that Costco is a multi-billion dollar company with an estimated net worth of 260 billion, it is hard for York County citizens to understand why we would be giving them a $30 million tax incentive when our property taxes have just gone up. We know that Costco truly desires its location. 30 million to them is insignificant in comparison to what they will be getting, but 30 million is a lot to the hard-working citizens of York County. So, please reconsider giving Costco Corporation a $30 million tax incentive. The South Carolina Daily Gazette had an article dated November 18th of this year that states the South Carolina Port Authorities Board of Directors approved a $1 million grant to this Costco project. That gives great concern that this is the first step to Southern York County becoming an inland port, very similar to inland port Greer and Dillon that are located in this state. The majority of York County taxpayers would oppose to us becoming the third inland port in South Carolina. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to speak against this request? If you'll just come forward.
Good evening. My name is Harry Johnson. I live at 3591 Enterprise Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina, in the Mount Holly community. Good to see you all again. My concern about this project is the truck traffic and just how impactful, just how impactful this traffic would be to the area. I'm also concerned that the county as a whole may not fully appreciate the unbelievably large number of trucks involved. I have talked with York County Economic Development, a Costco representative, and even Costco senior management regarding truck volume in general and about one specific truck scenario, and no one can give me a good answer. From Costco's numbers, the 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. truck volume is shown as 280 trucks per hour. This is 4.6 trucks a minute or one truck every 13 seconds. These trucks, on average, are 75 feet long and weigh 80,000 pounds. Coming down the exit ramp from I-77 north, they must come to a complete stop at the stop signs, then begin moving again onto Porter Road and move left two lanes within 600 feet to the roundabout. Here's my concern. 600 feet is eight trucks. Eight trucks at the Costco rate of 280 trucks per hour is 104 seconds. So, in slightly over one and a half minutes, the 600 feet to the roundabout is full and trucks would then be lining back up the exit to the interstate. Here's my question. How can this traffic nightmare be considered safe or even acceptable? I have asked the three previously mentioned groups this question, and the only answer I got, and it was from senior Costco management, is that I can't understand it because I'm not a traffic engineer. Well, yeah, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I am an engineer. I do have a bachelor's degree in engineering and it's from a pretty good school. And I very much understand length, distance, time, and physics, but I still don't get it. I was told the traffic engineer, South Carolina Department of Transportation, the city, and basically everyone who saw the presentation writing the truck traffic, which I am assuming is the TIA, were good with it. And if I saw the presentation, the TIA, I would be good with it also. Well, they didn't see it. And no one could or would explain to me how this situation is safe. And how many council members have seen this presentation, the assumed TIA? So, my point is, at 280, 280 trucks an hour, which is 4.6 trucks per minute, which is one truck every 13 seconds, at 75 feet in length, weighing 80,000 pounds, and for 600 feet of road, how can this be safe? With that, can tonight's vote be postponed until we all have a chance to see and review the presentation, the TIA, and are convinced of the complete safety of this project and the safety for everyone who travels on Porter Road before any county funding can be approved? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. I'm Jessica Beck. I live at 840 Puttins Place in Edgemore. My son goes to Mount Holly Elementary located on Porter Road. Because I am local to that area and travel that road often, I have concerns about the traffic impact this Costco project will bring. According to Costco's presentation two weeks ago, phase one is estimated at nearly 2,000 vehicle trips per day, and phase two increases to 3,300. Peak traffic is expected around 1:00 p.m., averaging seven vehicles per minute. And from the times 4:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the average is, is four to five vehicles per minute. These are numbers from the 2036 full build-out. Responsible planning requires us to consider the final numbers and not just first phases data. We need to plan ahead for the worst-case scenario. We've already seen what can happen when worst-case scenarios aren't considered. Had council members anticipated the possibility of 45 different chemicals at Sylfab, instead of only five, I believe the vote could have gone differently and Fort Mill might not be facing the situation they're dealing with today. But back to the traffic, Mount Holly Elementary dismisses a little after 2:00 p.m. My husband and many other parents will have to drive past the Costco site to pick up kids. I'm worried that Costco's traffic congestion won't be cleared by dismissal time. I worry that locals may no longer be able to reliably use Porter Road to travel down or use the exit they've always used to get on and off the interstate. Those roads, especially the on-and-off ramps, are going to pile up. If the state supports bringing Costco here, then we need preparations made ahead of time to prevent backups, collisions, and fatalities, as well as to protect local residents from unnecessary headaches. Costco may very well become a great neighbor, just like Budweiser and State Farm that's located on Porter Road, but the truck traffic is a serious concern. If the state can widen the interstate and improve the ramps before Costco begins operations, then we may gain another great neighbor. If the roads cannot be improved, then we may need to be more selective about who we incentivize to locate there. It is a valuable spot off the interstate that will only grow more and more valuable as Charlotte and the surrounding areas become more congested. We can absolutely be picky about who goes there to find the perfect industry for our community like we have with Budweiser and State Farm. I want to end with this. My family always taught me to leave things better than I found them. We do this when we camp. We leave the campsite better than when we arrived. I do this in my job. I want to leave my company better off than when I started. And I encourage each of you to do the same as council members. Please leave our community and our county better than you found it. If decision leaves you saying, "Well, I won't be on council when this or that happens," then maybe you aren't, then you know the issues are coming and maybe you aren't making the best decision for the people you serve and represent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak against?
Hello, I'm Jeff Blair, 299 Southside Road in Rock Hill. I'm sure everyone is aware of the many reasons why warehousing is a terrible solution for economic development. So, I'm not going to go through all of those reasons and waste your time. I will emphasize one, though, just because it's on your agenda. Warehousing provides very poor jobs, very low pay. If you actually look on your printed agenda, the previous agenda item pays over double what this one does. It just proves what a poor economic development solution warehousing is. So, Rock Hill has stated very clearly that they will not allow warehousing at the Old Panther site. They want something better. So, they have stated themselves that warehousing is a very poor quality economic development. So, logically, how is it that moving it down the interstate, just three exits somehow makes it good economic development? The fact is, it doesn't. It doesn't change the facts, doesn't change the circumstances. It's a bad solution on Porter Road and it's a bad solution at the Panther site. So, I have spoken to most members of the Rock Hill School Board about this issue. Everyone I spoke to was opposed, some vehemently opposed. I was given the number of loss of revenue to the tune of $18.6 million to the school board. So, you can't help but wonder, is it York County better than this? Does York County really need to go searching for more warehouses? We're, we're better. This location is a prime location, and that is one of the last really prime industrial sites that we have. Why would we allow that site to be used for such a poor purpose? And such a poor purpose that has a detrimental effect on the school, on the schools? If Rock Hill insists that they want this, as I understand, it can't be really stopped, but there's no reason why York County should build warehouses on the back of the school board. If Rock Hill wants it, make Rock Hill pay for it. The county shouldn't be incentivizing such poor quality development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Cindy Helms. My address is 2276 Williford Road, Rock Hill. I want to start by thanking the county management for changing the agenda from last, from the last time where it was misleading and said that it was all off-site public infrastructure, the 44 million, when actually only 14 million is off-site public infrastructure. I also want to really thank council. I have reached out to all of you. I met with everyone except Tom, and it was just because our schedules didn't align. But I want to thank you for taking the time and, and meeting with me and my daughter. I want to thank you for hearing our concerns and, and offering some solutions. So, the reason I'm here to speak is just to give like a public record of what we shared. 77 at exit 75. The exits prior to this one coming from Charlotte to Columbia are all four lanes, and they go down to two lanes just prior to this exit. We have a two-lane bridge at this exit. The ramps are single lanes and they do not have lights. And while I know and I heard from, from most all of you that, that you don't control the interstate, that that's a state issue, your vote does impact the traffic that's going to go on that interstate and those ramps. Also, the traffic, you've heard people talk about the traffic, but I shared that that was a concern of mine. At the end of phase two, there will be 2,500 truck trips, and that's according to Costco's own record, 2,500 truck trips daily. And you've heard them break down how many trucks that is a minute, so I won't do that. And my last big concern is, is the ports. I know that the ports gave a million dollars to this. Southwest York County does not want to become the next inland port because warehousing distribution is popping up all over our area. We don't, we don't want a port. We, we don't want cause for more railtra- railroads or rail traffic, but we do not want a port. And this is a big concern of ours. I want to thank you again for your time and, and thank you for making the time to meet with, with me and my daughter outside of here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bill Dunlap, 2633 Saluda Road. I just want to echo what our people in our community have spoken to y'all about. We thank y'all for everything y'all do. But this is definitely going to impact the safety and the public safety's aspect from the Sheriff's Department, EMS, the fire, the roads that all this industry is coming to. All the roads, the county is the one that responds to all the county, all the calls. Highway Patrol, they're stressed. They don't have, use a bit more officers cover the whole county. You know, but if the city of Rock Hill wants this, they've already annexed it. They've annexed it at all the exits. If they want it, I'm with Ms. Cox, industry ought to pay for it, not this, this body here. If they want the $30,000, they need to go to the other council and get it, not this council. Because y'all have many, many other things to be spending y'all's money on besides industry. They want to come, let them pay for it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak against? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Remind you, if you come forward, if you have any contractual privity, that you disclose that.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Tim Hagerty. I reside at 747 Birchway Drive in Fort Mill. I'm here as a York County citizen to speak in favor of Costco. It is an American-owned company with a reputation as a strong company with a solid business model, strong employee satisfaction, and consistent financial performance. The use is compatible with surrounding uses in the area. The bulk of the infrastructure needed already exists. Warehouse use is a less intrusive use than, than industrial development. People have spoken about being concerned about safety and community issues. This is a benign use in terms of what's being placed on the site versus what else you could be seeing with industrial development on that site, such as chemical manufacturing or any other hard-line manufacturing that, trust me, you would regret much more than a warehouse use. The number of jobs and the hourly wage estimates are strong, stronger than some of the recent fee lots that I have seen approved by this council. The dedicated on-and-off ramps are conducive to truck traffic. And from a zoning-location perspective, as well as from an economic growth perspective, Costco appears to be an ideal fit for the use. From other fee lots that we've been told, trust the experts. There's been traffic studies done. This is past the traffic study requirements. Why don't we trust the experts in this situation as we have in past fee lot situations and gone with an approval? So, I just ask you to keep that in mind. And if the community is concerned about safety, think about what your alternate options might be for this site, if not warehousing by a reputable American-owned company. Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to speak on the matter?
Good evening, council. I'm Russ Ellett. I'm the president of Excel Truck Group right across Porter Road from the proposed Costco warehouses. And Costco has done a very nice job working with us to improve the traffic flow in and out of our dealerships, of our dealership here. And the traffic circle makes the entrance and the egress much, much safer for the trucks coming in and out of our, in and out of our facility and for our employees also. So, I just wanted to let you all know that and thanks to Costco for working with us.
Thanks, sir. Is anyone else wish to speak before we close the public hearing?
I'm Seth Katz, Assistant Vice President of Real Estate for Costco Wholesale.
Can you, can you pull the mic down? I'm having a hard time.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Sure. Seth Katz, Assistant Vice President of Real Estate for Costco Wholesale. I'd like to first off begin by thanking council and staff. We've received a very welcoming and supportive environment. We've all have been consummate professionals, and we're very excited about the project that we hope to bring to our county. We've received a great reception locally and at the state level as well. I do want you to understand that we have heard concerns about the project over time through this process, but also from the very beginning when we first met with county leadership. Some of those concerns- Some of those concerns related to traffic, the inland port, and public infrastructure. And if I can address perhaps each of those for just a second. Relative to traffic, we appreciate the volume of truck and car traffic that we bring to a development like this. It has been studied extensively and revised over time based on feedback that we have received from, from some council members. And so I think it's important to understand that where the project sits today in its design is several generations from where it originally started. We believe, having done the studies to validate it, that studies which have been approved by the state as locally as well, that it is a very safe and efficient design that has been supported by the professional studies. Relative to the inland port, we have no desire that there be an inland port here. We have not talked to the port about it, nor is it something that is of interest to us. The last concern about public infrastructure, both on and off-site, and incentives related to public infrastructure, I want you to understand that I've taken those very seriously. I have talked with our executive leadership, and I would like to suggest that we can reduce our requests to twenty-five million dollars from the thirty, which would allow us to be reimbursed over time for the capital spend that we'll need to make related to only the on, the, I'm sorry, related only to the off-site public infrastructure improvements that we would be making on the front end. I'd like to thank you very much for your consideration.
Seth, I'm sorry to ask you this. We don't normally do this, but you said that you wanted to reduce your ask to twenty-five million? Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought the on, the onsite contract, the onsite needs were eighteen million.
The off-site are twenty-five million.
Anyone else wish to speak?
The primary breakdown of the off-site part is the road network, both the public roads and then the roads that will be dedicated that allow access from Oak Pond and Porter, as well as some work related to the, the pad that will be created for the future electric substation.
Since you've asked that question, I'm looking at this information that was provided to council, and it says that the onsite amount that was requested was eighteen point two million.
That's correct. I'm talking about the off-site part.
Right. But I'm trying, I'm trying to make sure I understand. You've reduced it to twenty-five million. You're saying that that is only consistent with the off-site, or you want, you want a hundred percent of your off-site?
Yes, ma'am.
Improvements. Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Seth, open that up.
One, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. What's the total cost?
Total infrastructure cost.
It's more than the thirty that they originally asked for. They were just asking for a portion of that back in credit.
The total infrastructure cost is forty-three, close to forty-four million dollars. The onsite amount was eighteen point two million, and the off-site was twenty-five million. So you're requesting a hundred percent of the total off-site instead of a prorata of the onsite, off-site.
I'm fine. I just wanted to take a look at it.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Seth, anyone else wish to speak on the matter before we close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All's favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing now, and public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I'm making a motion to approve an amendment to reduce the infrastructure credit to twenty-five million.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Since you made the motion, I want to speak first.
Usually the motion maker and the second has precedence.
All right. Yeah, you know, the, at the last meeting, I discussed that I didn't agree with paying, with the county using taxpayer funds to fund onsite improvements. And after, you know, Costco heard about it, and, and they talked it over, we had a discussion, and I think I can agree with the twenty-five million to pay for off-site because that will bring a benefit to the public. It helps the roads to flow a little bit better, even though it's going to be increased traffic. You know, if they came and didn't do these improvements, the county was going to end up funding them anyway, fully this way. The county is not funding the full twenty-five million. Part of this funding comes from the school district and from the city of Rock Hill and from the county. We're each putting in fifty percent of the revenue that we would get from the property. So I don't know what the total cost that the county would get, but this is a better deal for the county than what we would end up with in the future when we're having to fix all these things, similar to how much money we're spending at exit eighty-two, eighty-five, ninety, eighty-eight on the interstate, trying to take care of stuff. So that's why I can be satisfied that, that this is in the best interest of the public.
Any other discussion?
Tom, make, Tom make the second. Who make the second?
Who was the second?
Go ahead. You. Go ahead. Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilman Litten. So a couple of things I, I think are important to share, just so that we're all on the same page. Number one, the county does not own the property out on Porter Road. That's owned by a private investor. So they've owned the land, to my knowledge, for a long time. And when they originally purchased the land, the land was zoned, well, the, the land was in York County, in unincorporated York County. And the land was zoned for warehouse and distribution. So when the city of Rock Hill came to the landowners and the parcel owners out there and said, "Look, we'd like to annex your land," it's my understanding that those people that own the land said, "We'll do it conditionally that warehouse and distribution is still an option for us to have on our property." That's my understanding of what has happened to date. I think we'll all agree that, and I can't speak for council, I'll just speak for myself, that York County and I as a York County council member, and, and I think the city of Rock Hill's on board with this, that we're not really interested in warehouse and distribution out on the Porter Road site. Costco's a different tenant. I, I look at them as a Class A tenant. They're the third-largest retailer in the world. The Ports Authority is very interested in them being in their top twenty-five clients for the ports in South Carolina, state of South Carolina. Can't speak for the state of South Carolina, but this referral came from Commerce to us. So I, I do believe it's supported with, with Commerce. So if, if Costco doesn't get approved tonight and doesn't come to Porter Road, then what happens, my understanding, just following the, the details of this, the city of Rock Hill has invested so far in, in the near future about eighteen to twenty million dollars in the infrastructure of Porter Road just at this site. Why that's important, my understanding is, why this is important is if you don't get the power, if you don't get that stage of power out to that exit, then you don't have the power and the electricity to support, there's two-hundred-ninety-three, two-hundred-ninety-three acres in front of the Costco property, not owned by Costco. This is land owned by another developer, that that developer's been waiting to develop this land. So if we don't have the power source out on this exit to support the next set of development, and if Costco's not on the back part, guess what we could potentially have out on that exit? A lot of warehouse and distribution, a lot of small warehouse and distribution sites, because we wouldn't have the power source out there to support anything other than warehouse and distribution. So assuming that this goes through, and the city of Rock Hill fulfills their obligation to bring power out to the site, then we have the opportunity, as has been shared by council members and as it's been shared by the public that spoke with tonight, we have the opportunity to look at the developer in front and encourage that developer to look for the types of investors that we want on that property, like Advanced Manufacturing, the companies that will come in and have higher paying jobs, since that was mentioned tonight. But let's don't overlook something. When you look at, when you look at the workforce of York County, we don't have a workforce that can keep supplying a hundred thousand dollar jobs a year, right? We, we don't. We don't have the workforce that supports that. If we keep bringing in, and we've brought in a lot of average one-hundred-thousand-year jobs to York County, but we can't, that can't be the only demographic that we go after. We have another demographic we've got to help as well. So when you look at Costco and you look at the wages, there's mention of the number of trucks that were mentioned by the individuals that oppose Costco. They're talking about the number of trucks ten years from now. That's phase two of the project, ten years from now. So then if you look at the wages ten years from now, that wage is about eighty thousand dollars a year. And I have to say, I look back five, six years ago, we were talking about minimum wage at seven-fifty and moving up from seven-fifty, and now we're arguing that twenty-three, twenty-four dollars an hour is not a good wage for people that are looking to go to work for a good employer that's paying ninety-two percent of your benefits? That's higher than what we pay our staff in York County, or the school district, or the city of Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Tegukay, Clover, York. That's a higher contribution than all of them. There are other things, too, when you look at the Costco, when I, I'm in the benefits business, so when I look at their benefits package and I look at, their staff gets tenure increases, they're eligible for overtime, they get merit raises, there's, there's so much baked into what they do that allows you to actually earn more money over time. It's incredible. Very generous to their employees, their turnover rate is extremely low. If I'm not mistaken, it's less than eight percent, if I remember reading that properly. Trucks talked about, the wages are talked about, the roads. So let's talk about the roads just for one second. If we're going to focus on ten years out, then you would think that our local state delegation here in York County, I can't speak for them, but, but you would think that our local delegation, probably back in January of twenty-twenty-five, was talking with the state of South Carolina, saying, "Listen, if this entity comes into York County," because at the time it was a quiet entity, we didn't know who it was, right? "If this entity's coming into York County and they may land on Porter Road, we've got a problem," right? It was said, the road at twenty-one coming south goes from, I think, eight lanes to four lanes. And then if you look at the on ramp, on ramps and the off ramps, you look at Porter Road itself, ten years from now, fifteen years from now, the way it looks today is probably not the way it's going to look in the future because you're having to plan ahead for that. So our local delegation is talking to the state of South Carolina about planning ahead for this. So you can't picture it as, as it is today when we're saying Costco's in phase two going to go to, from seven-hundred-and-fifty-one trucks to twelve-hundred-and-forty-seven trucks coming in a day, and then the same number going out a day, right? Just to make this clear. You got, when they start, assuming that this gets approved, is seven-hundred-and-fifty-one trucks coming in and seven-hundred-and-fifty-one leaving. Now, I realize that's the total, that's a total of fifteen-hundred a day, but it's trips. They call that trips. So it's like, I, I won't get off on a tangent, but anyway. I think what you see at Porter Road, and I think what you see on seventy-seven a decade from now will not look the same. I think that Costco coming in gives us an opportunity to support our strategic plan for one thing, where we talk about the right type of, the right type of industry that we wanted into York County, gives us a chance to get out and speak to the developer that's controlling two-hundred-and-ninety-three acres that could have eight to twelve new businesses on that property that could generate significant tax revenue for us. And the last thing I'll say is that I want to go back to the individual owner of the land. So we want to wait for something out, something else for that person's land. Now, just think about it, if you own some land, and I'm just going to spitball here, that you could sell your land for sixty to a hundred thousand dollars an acre, and you've been sitting on it for years, and we're saying, "Why don't you hold it?" If I owned land that I could sell for that, I think I'd go back to the entity asking me to hold it, say, "Okay, I'll hold it, but, but for two, three, four, five billion dollars a year for you to lease the land from me," right? Because that's opportunity cost, right? I'm, I'm just not sure that somebody that owns land is going to be that good of a corporate citizen to York County. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe they would be. But the good news is that if we get the infrastructure out there, not we, because the city of Rock Hill's the one that's investing in the infrastructure out there, if we get the infrastructure out there, we have it there to support other types of businesses which are good tenants for us to attract to York County. I want to reiterate one other thing that was said, just to make sure this is understood. When you look at the tax revenue that's generated, roughly sixty-two percent of the tax revenue goes to the school district, twenty-four percent goes to Rock Hill, and fourteen percent comes to York County. If Costco doesn't come, there is no money going to anybody until that developer decides what he wants to do with the property. And we, I have no idea, I haven't spoken to him, so I don't know the answer to that. I'm sure he knows the answer, though. Thank you.
I'll just go down the line. If, if you've heard me say anything about this project from start to finish, from day one, I, I was impressed with the way Costco presented its product, what they stood for, and the things they wanted to bring to this community. I've defended Costco's on many different fronts, from the wages that they pay to the corporate citizens that they're going to be in this community. I was, I was all on board with Costco, still all, all on board with Costco. My only reservation that I've had throughout this process was, we've seen school district after school district come in this chamber asking for help and assistance to fulfill their financial obligation to, whether it's build schools, meet budget needs. And if you know anything about a fee-in lieu or a infrastructure credit, we take money from the school districts, we take money from the cities, and we take money from York County's coffers to help give these incentives. Right now, across the board, it's fifty percent. Karen, can you put the slide up? Right now, it's fifty percent. So whatever the tax revenues were supposed to be over the life of this twenty-year agreement, you see it on the screen, the schools is getting sixteen point six million, they're giving up sixteen point six million over the twenty-year period. Rock Hill's getting six point five, they're giving up six point five. And there you go, with our small percentage, we're getting four point eight, we're giving up four point eight. That's how fifty percent across the board works. And after seeing school district after school district come in this chamber asking for assistance and help, to help fund their mission to educate kids and build facilities, I want Costco's. But I also don't want to take as much as we can from our schools. My whole mission with this negotiation with council members, with staff, with Costco's was, let's try to lighten the lift on our schools. At the last meeting, you heard me try to attempt to make a motion to shift some of these percentages so that our schools don't bear the burden, bear the burden of this lift of giving this incentive. Now, who could be for saying, "We're going to take all we can take from our schools"? I wouldn't be in that line. So I asked staff to get me a copy, because I was stopped mid-screen, of saying, "Hey, we don't know if that's going to work, what you're proposing to do." So I said, "Well, I wanted to see what's going to prevent us from doing, changing these percentages." I was handed, I got it right before the meeting. And I'm not comfortable committing eighteen point six million of the schools' money. What I am comfortable with is shifting some of that burden from our schools onto the city of Rock Hill. We heard several people come, several meetings, this meeting, two meetings ago, three meetings ago, to say, "If Rock Hill wants it, let Rock Hill put a little more into it." Well, everyone sitting up here knows, everyone sitting on the school district, school board knows, that Rock Hill sells water, sewer, and electric. Whatever Rock Hill gives up, they're going to make it back. Hand over fist from this agreement and all the other development that Councilman Huckabee just mentioned that's going to come to that area. They have significant plans to ramp up their investment to put water, sewer, and electric to service any and every business that comes there. York County, we don't have a way to recoup that. And the rest of the property out in the area is in the tenth district for the city of Rock Hill, so they're going to control that money as well. Our schools, they don't have a way to make up revenues that they're going to lose, well, not lose or forego for twenty years. So my whole goal for this whole negotiation was to shift some of that burden off of our schools onto the city of Rock Hill. And first, I was saying, Rock Hill should give up all their tax dollars from this deal because they're waiting in line to sell water, sewer, and electric to an almost-million-square-foot facility that's operating around the clock three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, and all the other development that's coming. I've since then backed off of that just a little, and I'm going to make a motion here in just a few minutes to shift that burden from fifty percent from Rock Hill to seventy-five percent to Rock Hill. I'm, I heard the citizens say, "If Rock Hill want it, let them pay a little more." I'm for that. Also heard people say, "Our schools need to keep as much revenues as they can keep." I'm for that. I'm not asking to shift York County's small portion because that is a very, very- I'm not asking to shift York County's small portion, because that is a very, very small portion, 4.8 million over 20 years. That's, we give that up every day to get a 400, I think it's, is it 320 or 420 million investment? What's, what's that total investment?
240.
240. So we want the jobs, we want the tax base. We're not too far in, we, we not, we can get used to the traffic, and I've, I've defended the traffic in by saying that the traffic engineers are going to study this and put whatever needs to be in place to make it safe, to make it work. I met with, I met with several people who sat for an hour and a half and expressed their concerns about this project. It's my job to help try to facilitate as many things and many people as possible in a deal. I think with shifting these percentages, we can't do anything about the traffic, the trucks are going to be what they're going to be, but that says that this company's going to do good business, they're going to be there. And with a footprint of 240 versus six or seven mom or pop warehouses that could come and go at any time, can go out of business, and we're stuck with warehouses in our community that now we're trying to find people to take them. But I guarantee you, and I believe 100% Costco's come here, they're going to be here for a long, long time with that kind of investment. We don't have to worry about them going out of business. What we have to do is make sure that we're able to facilitate their needs so that somebody don't come in 30 years from now and recruit them to go somewhere else. But I like their benefits, I've defended their wages. I've said last, two weeks ago, I don't think our starting wages here at the county is 28 bucks, 29 bucks an hour. I don't think the city starts out there, employees, 28, 29 bucks an hour. That's a good, solid wage, I've saw their benefit package. Their benefits are better than what we have here at the county. So we can't say that these are low-paying jobs, low-wage-paying jobs. And one more thing that I, I had looked up, the city of Rock Hill School District, 65% of our kids are on free and reduced lunch. 65%. Our schools are totally free lunch now, with so many kids on free lunch, it wasn't even worth the headache to go through the charging system for the few. So don't tell me we can't use jobs that put families to work. And if two incomes happen to work at this facility, I guarantee you, those kids in that household won't be on free and reduced lunch. That's a huge lift for a community to have that many kids on free and reduced lunch. And I ain't going to get into what it is in Clover, what it is in Fort Mill. But that's what we have, we look at everything, we just don't look at one issue from traffic to emissions, to, to all the, we try to take it all in consideration. And I think what I'm going to offer here tonight covers a lot of bases for a lot of people who show concern this last four or five months we've been dealing with this. And so Madam Chair, at the appropriate time, if you let me know when I can make that amendment to the motion, I'll, I'll do it, but I want to give everyone a chance to speak on, on what we got going on. But this is a solid company, I want them here, but I feel like some of you citizens feel, let Rock Hill tote the water a little bit more. They'll never be able to put as much as our schools are going to put into any fee in lieu or tax structure deal that we do. I don't want Rock Hill School District coming in this chamber asking us to approve $30,000 to put on a house just so they can help build their facilities to educate our kids. If we start massaging some of these structures now, and another thing that I noticed in this deal, the ordinance in the agreement that the city has with Costco's section G, the city will be paid a one-time amount of $3 million at the time of the first certificate of occupancy is issued, to reimburse the city for public improvements and public needs associated with the area. So right here, Rock Hill's giving up 6.5 million over 20 years. This agreement says, when the certificate of occupancy is gained, they're going to get $3 million back out of this. So their skin in the game just got cut in half. So why aren't we asking Rock Hill to put more on the table? Because, hey, there's a side agreement, there's a deal that says, Rock Hill's put into it, baked into it, they're going to get $3 million at the time of the first certificate of occupancy. I just got this today. I haven't even read through it, there's probably some more things in here that's, that should raise concern as to why we should be asking Rock Hill to put more on the table. If this is not a reason enough to say, Rock Hill should put more in the deal, they're getting $3 million back. We see they're going to giving up 6.5 over 20 years. Plus, they're getting a cement pad for the substation. I think that has the value of it. What's the value of the, the, the substation? Property dedication of electrical substation, 672,000. If I get that right. Probably, no, yeah. It's so, it's almost a million dollars, I think, if I'm reading this correctly. My job here is to make sure this is a fair deal for our city, our county, and our school district. And I wouldn't be asking this if the city wasn't in the water, sewer, and electric business. And there's one more thing, please indulge me for one more second. Page three, section E, utility. It appears to me that maybe York Electric would have been servicing this area, but Rock Hill is now going to be the service provider for the area. Because I read in here a clause that said that York Co-op would remove utility, something from the area, I lost my place, but there are a lot of things that, that go into these agreements that we don't get a chance to see unless we're asking for them. And I'm, I'm shocked that it took this long for us to get, for me to get it, I personally asked for it. This council should know about things like this that's going into deals, because it affects how we make our decision. If this council would have knew, Rock Hill was getting a $3 million, I don't want to call it a kickback, what a kickback, at the deal, before we got started, we probably would have been structured something different. But here's a copy of it, I'll pass it down the line, I have two copies, it's right there on the page, it spells it out. So why aren't we not asking for our city, like citizens have said, let Rock Hill put more on the table for this deal? Because they're going to sell power for years to come, years to come. And we all know that runs the city of Rock Hill, the water, sewer, and electric. So this small shift in the property tax revenues is not going to cripple our city, but it shows good faith that we're supporting our educational system and that they want this deal just as much as we want it. So Madam Chair, at the appropriate time, if you let me know when I can make an amendment to the motion, I'll, I'll make it.
What I'm trying to do is to limit the number of times that we go through the whole route, so if you have an amendment to propose, I would go ahead and do that now.
I can do that. I make the motion to approve third reading, conditioned upon 50% SSR against the fee in lieu of taxes being met through the annual allocation of 75% of the city of Rock Hill's millage, a 50% allocation of the county's millage, and the adjustment variable allocation of the Rock Hill School District 3's millage to address the shortfall for the annual credit calculation, and that Taylor Creek Road not be connected to the industrial park.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. At this point in time, we will, we will debate the amendment. Do you mind reading the amendment one more time?
Okay, one more time. The amendment reads as follows. The motion to approve third reading, conditioned upon the 50% SSR C, that's special source revenue credit, against the fee in lieu of taxes being met through the annual allocation of 75% of the city of Rock Hill's millage, a 50% allocation of the county's millage, and an adjustment variable allocation of the Rock Hill School District 3's millage to address the shortfall of the annual fee slash credit calculation, and that Taylor's Creek Road not be connected to the industrial park from Fire Tower. Contingent on the city of Rock Hill's approval. And Tommy seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we, the way this typically works is whoever make the motion and whoever is the second gets first commentary. Do you have anything else to add?
I think I've said enough.
Okay. Anyone else want to debate the motion, amendment?
Real quick, just to jump in, from the staff's perspective, we don't think this is a viable option for this project, and we don't think this, this can work. So we're, we're happy to discuss more at length about the why, but we don't think, we don't think that this is viable.
So, let me.
I have, well, I think to the extent that management is now stepping in, we, we have typically, I could tell you with the Panthers deal, there was an agreement to do 100%, and, and the city of Rock Hill was so emphatic about that, that they were prepared to give 100% of their tax incentives away for that. So to the extent that what we have been told as a council is that we control what the percentages are and how they direct themselves, and now to be told that we don't, I think we need, we need some explanation.
Yeah, if done at this, if done at this stage of a project, it will effectively kill this project.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I said, if, if this change is made at this stage of a process and a project, it will effectively likely end in, in this project.
I think that's a different question, respected, respectfully to our county manager, I think that is a different question than what the county council is empowered to do and what we have been elected to do. And if what you're saying is that we don't have the authority to do that, that's a different question than if we pass this authority, you think it's going to compromise us being able to move forward, then.
You have the authority to, to set the, the tax rate, but if done at this stage of a project, it will, it will effectively lead to this project not coming to fruition.
So, okay, are we going to have other comments here, guys?
I think we will have other comments, but I think at some point, I'm confused about. It seems to me that we have management interjecting their opinion on this, I don't know if we need legal advice and go into executive session, or if we just need to move ahead.
I, I want to make this comment, because it's our job, we've been given the authority to set these rates. I can, I can live with management saying it's their opinion, but it's our authority. And I think some things have tried to be put into this agreement, and that's why my motion was stopped two weeks ago, to say, hey, bump, you may want to take a look at this agreement. I had a meeting two weeks ago, almost now, that told me kind of what to expect, what, why I was stopped mid-stream of making that motion. And it came to me that, I don't want to call it a side deal, but an agreement was made that, hey, if any revenues are shifted, we're not going to agree to it, we have last say to approve it, but you can't make, you can't put things in an agreement that takes our authority away from us. That, that burns me so bad to say, we're going to make a side agreement that takes this authority away from York County Council, something that was given to us to use and utilize. And you've heard me mention, the staff has heard me mention, some was here, some wasn't here, how the Panthers deal, I hate to go back to it, because it was a, a botched deal, the Panthers deal, the city was giving up 100%, the school district was giving up 65% of their revenues, and the county was giving up 35% of our revenues. Now we're being told, we can't do that. Yes, we can, because that authority is given to us, and we should not sit here as seven elected body members, let the tail wag the dog. We're, I've said it up here, we're the big brother. We've been given this authority just because Rock Hill may not like what we send to them. Senate don't like what the House sends to it, but it's our authority to send it to them, and it's their choice to accept it or deny it. If they deny it, they're denying Costco. We're saying, we're sending this to the city as to how we're going to agree to it. We don't have to send it to them based on what they're going to agree to, that's not while I was elected, to let the city tell the county what to do, when we're the ones that's been charged with structuring the deal for fee in lieu, tax structures, infrastructures credit. We cannot sit here. If we let the city make this determination on this deal, we'll never have control of any other deal that comes through this chamber ever again, because the city's going to always say, we won't agree to it. And we're sitting here trying to figure out how to massage it, massage it so the city does agree to it.
So.
I don't want to be a part of that.
So here's what I want to, here's, as Chair of the, as Chair of the council, I would like to say this is the first time that I've seen this side agreement. I have not seen this. I don't know if other council has seen it. I know that I submitted a request to SEDOT to obtain a full TIA, which curiously was not available until December 15th. I think we have two options here as a council. One, we go into executive session to ask for legal advice, or number two, to request a deferral of this while we ask for additional information about this so that council can get some additional information on this. Those are the two routes that I think are the most appropriate for this board. I have not been aware of this until just now. So, so, so I will say, we can go through and before we hear from other folks in legal, from Costco, I need to hear from council, is there a willingness to want to, is there a motion for executive session?
No, I, I would say we, as council members, need to have, each of us have a moment to speak about this. I don't think it's time for us to go into executive session, and I, and I would recommend we have some other people speaking on this matter.
I make a motion for executive session.
Second.
Motion for executive session and a second for legal advice, any discussion on that matter? All's in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Opposed.
Raise your hand for opposing. All right, we'll go into executive session.
Yep, we are out of executive session. No action was taken. As we last left the meeting, the motion on the table was to, was by Mr. Roddy that was seconded to request an amendment to reallocate the percentages of the $25 million incentive package that would be given to the company. Prior to that, my understanding, just to clarify things, is that council does have the authority to make that proposal and so that is where we last left off, the motion and the second. Do we have any other discussion on the amendment?
I think I needed to remove part of that motion that said with Rock Hill's consent or approval. So do I need to make that, do I need to make that motion again to?
If you, or just to withdraw that portion of the contingent approval of Rock Hill.
Okay, I want, I need to withdraw the portion of Rock Hill's contingency on the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
You were the second. Do you agree with the, with the amendment?
Yeah.
All right, so the motion currently, the amendment on the table is to reallocate the pro-rata portions provided to the $25 million incentive package as presented by Mr. Roddy. Any other discussion on the matter?
Yes, so in regards to this, in regards to Costco's, all right. We've got, as is talked about tonight, has been a, as mentioned, a great American company. An opportunity for a company to come in of their size is, is one of those items that just doesn't come along. Very seldom, if not at all. As you look at what they're bringing into the area, it's, it's twofold. It's not only multiple jobs and it's not only benefits that are excellent, but it's also given an opportunity at this location in order to open up other companies coming in there. I think this infrastructure deal is a phenomenal deal because when we look at fee and lose, we don't, we don't look at other opportunities that are business opportunities. When we look at a fee and lose with other businesses, but when we look at this infrastructure deal, we're looking at a possibility of eight to nine other companies coming in to this area because we're going to have the infrastructure in place. It's a, basically, it's a field dream. It's an opportunity, not only to get a great company to come in here, but also to pave the way when you're going to have water, you're going to have power going out there, you're going to have facilities that are there for great companies to come in afterwards also. And I think that's a win-win for the area. When we look at, when we had the meetings of Costco's, it was phenomenal because of how they listened to us. And that roundabout was one of the things that they, they came up with in order to address traffic flow. The traffic flow on the facility itself and the amount of trucks you can put on that facility more than compensates for any backup. I mean, the amount of vehicle, amount of trucks they can have is absolutely, they addressed that. And again, that is something that we were concerned about on the upfront. And they addressed that on the traffic flow right on the property itself. So you, there was two issues that were addressed right out of the gate for us. Thirdly, as you look at this opportunity, you know, we're, we're looking at bringing in a partner into the community. We're looking at bringing in a partner that will help out with trails. We're looking at a partner that will also not be bringing in chemicals in the area. Okay, this is a safe business to have. Okay, this is a safe business. I'm excited about supporting them moving forward. Again, I think that there's a big investment from Rock Hill in order to make this work. A lot more than, again, that was talked about tonight here. And I think it's critical, we move forward, we support this company and, and we get what I see as a shining star in Costco's into this area. Thank you.
Okay, so as we've moved along in this process, we keep learning new things. And so this, we have a little situation where what bump has suggested and has made a motion to. In the, just if you could have your heart of heart wishes, that is what, it would be a great thing because it would really support the schools. But you're walking a tight rope here and it could be that Rock Hill will not accept this. And what we're trying so hard to do is to give back to our schools and make sure that, 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 that this is a good project that would, would support the schools. But if something happens, then it's gone. And that money that the schools would get, which would be about a million dollars a year, possibly more as time goes on. And so that, that's what, that's what you really have to think about. Do you really want to take that chance? I'm, I'm not a big risk taker. I am not a big risk taker. Don't take me to Las Vegas. I'm telling you the truth. Because if I win $10, I walk out the door and think that I've won a million dollars. So I just try to make sure that we, that my thoughts and my vote go for a sure bet. And a sure bet, I feel like, is going with supporting Costco because I, I just know in my heart what kind of company that we're dealing with. And I do know in my heart what kind of company we have a chance of dealing with. And I want to deal with Costco because I want to deal with a company that is an American company. That's what I want. And we have so few, I mean, it was a point not too long ago where we, we were losing, losing by the hordes our, our companies. And I come from a small town that lost all of their, because their jobs went to Mexico. And so I'm just like, okay, guys, let's, let's really think about what, what you want to do with something this great that is given to us. And, and I know that the traffic is an issue. And maybe I'm being Pollyanna here, but I think that our, the state of South Carolina and our legislators will come across. I do think they're going to come across. They're going to widen 77. They're going to widen that ramp. And it's not going to be an issue. And like I say, maybe I am being a little Pollyanna there, but, but I, my support is with Costco.
Any other discussion?
All right. Since Tommy always hangs himself, I'm a big one to tie my own rope. With Costco, with these gentlemen, they've, every time I talk to them, they've been real good and I speak with and all. I ain't got anything, I can say bad or anything, but I haven't never really cared too much for any of the fees and lose. And I've always stated on, I agreed that everybody should pay for their own infrastructure. I own two businesses and when I was starting up both of my businesses, I didn't exactly see anybody help me one way or another with their wallet out. But I, I just see things a lot different. It's sort of like nowadays dealing with people talking about how, how hot it is. And a lot of times I go through the, after being outside all day, working in the heat. And I tell them it ain't a bit hotter than it used to be. You just done spend all day in the air conditioning. I get the idea that we need job creation and whatnot. And I'm compromising tremendously. But I just, I really, I'm concerned about the, the trucks and all tremendously. And I, it just really concerns me how every word that you do in York County now, everybody's complaining about traffic, but we keep saying more, more, more. I don't know, I welcome any businesses and all that we get, but it's just kind of concerning me. I guess it's done and done, but I guess we'll see what happens.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I might, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, this is not about us versus Costco. This was clearly about shifting where the money was coming from. I said in my opening, I'm supporting Costco, but I don't support the, the structure of where the money's coming from. I'm trying to lighten the load on our school district. And time and time again, like I said, we, we've seen school districts come in this chamber asking for help. This is a form of help before they come ask for help. It's, and we've heard from legal, it's our authority to set these percentages because we've done them in the past. We always do them. We always had that discretion. So this is not, a vote for this structure is not a vote against Costco. It's still a vote for Costco. It's just a vote for how the money will be structured and where the, the lifting is going to come from.
I struggle with this amendment a whole lot. This is a, it's a tough decision. Here's, it has nothing to do with Costco, nor that it is, as Councilman Roddy said, it's all about how the money is, what the money amount is. Because they could come regardless. They could show up tomorrow without any of this and just start doing what they're doing. And what we're tasked to do, but waiting at this last minute to start reallocating money, just because we have the authority to do something, doesn't always mean we should just run head on into it and do it. You know, the government is a partnership and I think that all of the entities should have a, a say-so in what we're doing. You know, I personally think that Rock Hill is, the schools are getting a, a good deal out of this in that this isn't creating an impact on the schools itself. This is not facilitating the need to build more facilities. You know, if this was a 900 lot subdivision, which is entirely possible for that property if it was rezoned, you know, and they don't have impact fees, then if we could negotiate more money to help them out with that, yeah. But this, that's not what we're doing. And to tell people to pay for their own impacts and then say, well, we need them to pay for impacts that they're not even creating, I struggle with that. And I struggle with, you know, they're going to have traffic, yeah. You know, can we gloss it over and make it rosy? Probably. But I just, I don't foresee using our, our power as a, as a council when forcing our views on other elected entities like this. I think it makes us look terrible to have staff and the state and a whole bunch of entities get together and negotiate. And then we come up here at the last minute with partial information, maybe not even all the information, and just start arbitrarily picking numbers based on part of the story. I really would prefer to get all of the information to make a, a good, honest decision on this and not just rush through something that we think will work and, and that we, I'd actually think I would like to, I don't know if I can revoke my motion and make a motion to defer until the next meeting.
Current motion on the table is an amendment to the reallocation of the provisions. There is now a new amendment requesting to defer the matter to the next council meeting. Is there a second for that motion? I'll second it for discussion.
Well, I'll just say, just because he withdraws his motion doesn't mean my motion doesn't stand. We could, my motion is to approve third reading at the financial breakdown. So my motion would still stand.
Your amendment, your amendment will follow after this one, the motion and the second to defer the matter to the next council meeting is now has a second. Is there any, does anybody want to discuss the deferral piece of this?
Yes, I do. I'd like to. So all due respect to the motion for deferral. You know, looking back, could we have done things differently with this deal and any other deal? Of course, we could have. But y'all, we've been talking about this since November, no, December of 2024.
No, sir. No, sir. I will interrupt that. That's not true. That's not true and I will not allow that to continue. That's not true.
Okay. We were made aware of this project, our economic development committee was made aware of this project in December of 2024. And there was, anyway. There's been, there's been plenty of time to discuss this and I just, I feel like deferring this to the next meeting just doesn't make sense. I mean, we need to vote on this tonight. Vote your conscience. Vote to approve it or don't approve it, but you need to vote your conscience tonight, in my opinion, as one council member. With that being said, I got permission to share this, so I want to go ahead and share it since we're going to vote on.
Can you share who you got permission from? We need to understand who you got permission to share what.
I guess I need to hold this until we, well, I guess I should go ahead and do it since this, we could vote for deferral. So this came from the city of Rock Hill. I had permission from John Geddes to share this. This came from internal staff, so I think this is important to share because much has been mentioned about the city of Rock Hill having skin in the game. And I'm not here as, just because I live in Rock Hill. When I got elected, I was elected to represent York County. And I think if you followed the decisions that I've made since I joined this council in 2023, I have made the best decisions I can make for the district I was elected to. I have made the best decisions I can make for the district I was voting on. So I'm not reading this, what I'm about to read, for the benefit of Rock Hill. It's just the dad gum facts. I'd like, like to use other language, but anyway. So the city of Rock Hill has completed investments in economic development so far of $776,000 on Porter Road. Electric, they, they have invested $1,459,000 in underground, an underground main line, electric line. They've had overhead upgrades to the main line of $103,000. That's $2.3 million they have invested thus far in economic development improvements and, and the electricity. Future investments, these are estimated costs. Water and sewer, over the next five years, they're going to invest $15.6 million in the Porter Road lift station upgrade. In 10 years, they're going to invest $36 million into a duplicate 36 inch Wildcat conveyor system. Electrical in five years, overhead upgrade to the main line, $300,000. A new substation, $6.5 million. Transmission line, $9 million. Longview Road primary exit loop connection, $531,000. Circuits, $1.5 million. 10 years, they're going to invest circuits three and four, new substation feeders of $1.5 million. 20 years from now, they're going to have to invest in a new substation at Porter Road, $6 million, a new substation exit feeder, $4 million. If my math is correct, that's $78 million in future investments into the Porter Road area. It's important, based on what I shared earlier, is, I'm just, look, I, I've just asked questions and I'm, I'm trying to, like everybody else, trying to digest what is factual and what's not. I'm not going to repeat what everybody said. The comments made about this particular Class A tenant Costco coming to Porter Road, I think makes a lot of sense for many different reasons. I didn't mention the one that you said, but that's, I was going to say that, and I appreciate you saying what you said about the school district, because it's true. We, we do need to divorce a diverse workforce here in York County. There's no doubt about it. So I believe the infrastructure that Rock Hill is putting in place sets us up for the other types of employers we want to attract to the Porter Road area into the future. The power, the sewer, all the infrastructure placed out there sets us up to attract those types of businesses into York County. So this is not just a conversation, in my opinion, about Costco going on Porter Road. This is about the 293 acres in front of Costco. This is about the rest of Porter Road. And, and then we don't know what the state's going to do. But I will say, I've talked to members of the state delegation, those are our house members, haven't spoken in either of our senators. But they started having conversations in January of 2025 when this broke, when they learned of the project and started talking about, what do we need to be doing in this particular corridor of York County? So that we can actually support the growth that looks like it's coming. So those discussions are being had, as someone mentioned earlier. That doesn't mean it's going to happen, but credit, credit to those individuals that started having that conversation when they learned about this project. So anyway, just to set the record straight about the investment Rock Hill's making, they have made and they are making a significant investment into that area so that we can bring not just, not just commercial and industrial to the area, but residential down on Mount Holly Road. I mean, I've talked to people that own thousands of acres of land down there, and I've talked to them about what they're thinking about doing there. And it's, it's pretty neat, quite frankly. So that infrastructure they're putting in place is for the entire area, not just Porter Road. Eventually, everybody's going to need the water, the sewer, and the electricity to do what they want to do, right? So anyway, for those reasons, I, I cannot support deferral. I cannot support the motion on the table that, that Councilman Roddy made, but I can support the passage of this particular motion.
Since we're talking about the deferral, I don't think the deferral is going to help us in any way, because Andy, Councilman Litten just said, you know, we've been talking about this and at the 11th hour, I don't think we're going to learn anything new. I think the big discussion tonight was about how the, the money lift was going to happen. I think there's an overwhelming majority of support on council for the Costco deal. What we've tried to carve out was where the lifting was going to come. I said it, I support Costco's. I said I want them here. We've been battling back and forth about where the money's going to come from. I don't think, and I've, I found out late today that they're on a deadline. They have a drop dead date. I want to be respectful of that. If we defer today, when are we going to have another chance to meet before their deadline?
What is it? Do we, do we know what a deadline is? This is the first I've heard of a deadline.
I think it's December 11th.
I'll let our economic development director confirm, but my understanding is it's December 11th.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think we could, we could certainly arrange a special called meeting before then in order to collect more information. But I think at this point, it was important for me to at least understand where this, where this deadline came from, because I wasn't aware of that. So if you can just let us know.
Sure, I just confirm their due diligence period ends December 12th.
December 12th, thank you, sir. All right, so the current motion, the current motion on the table is to defer the matter to the next council meeting. I don't know if there's, the next council meeting isn't until when, 15th? So there would need to be a special called meeting before that period of time in order to gather more information. Does the individual who made the request to defer the matter, are they interested in amending their motion to put it to the 11th or sometime before the 11th?
Yes.
All right, so the motion is amended to, to require that there be a special called meeting prior to December 12th. Is the second or supportive of that?
You were, sir, the second or?
Was I? I'm supportive of that. All right. So, so, just so, just so we don't continue to drag this out, I'm certainly not, people are going to be where they're going to be on this. But I think for purposes of us, us, us at least understanding where the, where the meets and bounds are, the motion currently on the table is to require that there be a meeting prior to December 12th as part of this.
So further discussion? So I, I wouldn't be deferring myself, I wouldn't support any type of deferral on this thing. I think that when you look at the conversation that we've had about, you know, what we understand about the, the investment from Rock Hill, and we also understand the amount of money that the school system will get and other people will get across the board from this project. You know, we're, we're looking at a process that we've been going through for months, all right? Months. And, and we're at a point now where we've got a deal on the table with a great company. Again, I would not be supporting any type of deferral, and I'm looking forward to getting this voted through tonight.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move down towards the deferral. Is there any other comments on the deferral? We need to kind of move this along. We still have seven other public hearings. Any other comments?
On this particular case, I would support a deferral. I have requested from SC DOT a copy of the TIA. This council has not even been presented with a copy of the TIA that exists with respect to this development. I requested it immediately when it, when I knew that it had become public, and I won't get it until December 15th. I will certainly ask DOT to provide that information sooner rather than later. I would support deferral, especially to, to have it done before the, before the 12th, because I think that we've learned some new information. I was not privy to some information that was shared. I was not part of any of the discussions that were had about how this was done. I had not seen until today a copy of some of the limitations that the city of Rock Hill had put on this. I certainly respect the fact. And there's a lot more discussion that I will have on, on the other pieces. I think Costco has been very transparent. I have to hand it to them. Every question that I've asked them, they have responded to me transparently. Some of the information that makes it out publicly hasn't. I honestly think folks in this community don't even know what's happening, and that's what bothers me. A lot of people think this is a Costco that they can go shop at. It's not. It's only a warehouse and distribution facility, and it's going to be moving. The only people that get the warehouse and distribution facility are the Indian land folks. And there has been some discussion about can we get one, but there's been no promises. And I want to, I want to say thank you to Costco for not saying that there is something when there's not, because that makes, that makes sense to me. There has also been information that it's only 700 trucks. Well, I don't like that, because to me, it confuses people. Folks are out here thinking, oh, it's only a few hundred trucks. You know what, honestly, when you compare it to other warehouse and distribution facilities, this is phase one, at least 1,500 tractor trailer trucks, not to mention the cars. I don't, I think folks need to walk into this eyes wide open. And at full build out, this is almost 2,800 tractor trailer trucks. The largest warehouse and distribution facility that we have in this county has maybe 180 tractor trailer truck trips. This is going to be 1,500 tractor trailer truck trips. Let's at least be honest about it. Let's at least be straight up about the fact that this is 10 times bigger than anything we have ever seen in our county. Please. And why are we giving $30 million, $25 million to pay for infrastructure that is needed for a company to do the business they need to do? When they are a billionaire company? Well, because they're smart, and us giving that funds away, I just, I don't support. At the same time, what we're talking about here is, is a deferral for less than 10 days for us to be able to gather the information that was just presented to us tonight. I cannot imagine why that is a problem for this council to gather more information. So I will support the amendment. I think that we should gather more information. I think whatever we do, it should be done eyes wide open with all of the facts out on the table. And I can't imagine why that is, that is a problem for anyone, but apparently it's a problem for most.
Our point of order. How can we, how can we vote on a deferment when I have an active motion to approve, still engaged?
It can take precedence over it.
What's that?
It can take precedence over it.
Which one needs to be done first?
The motion to defer.
So if we defer, what makes, what makes?
Then the whole matter is deferred to the coming council meeting.
So what happens to my motion?
If we defer the motion.
My motion gets deferred.
Unfortunately, the motion was made after yours, and there's precedents of motions. So this particular motion of deferral, we have to make a decision about before we get to the next one.
Okay, so we'll just focus.
This motion is, is a, a special called meeting prior to December 12th. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Raise your hand.
Noes.
All right, so we're back to the other motion, which is Mr. Roddy's motion, which is to reallocate the financial provisions. Any, I think some folks have already kind of commented on that. If there's anyone else who wants to comment on it, we're now in discussion on that.
I think I've said my piece. I just think that lighten the load on our schools, shift Rock Hill's percentage to 75, and I think we got a great deal. Voted up or down? Let's call for the vote.
Anyone want to speak? I'll speak on this, because this is my district. I do think it's important to say this. Businesses are welcome in York County. I welcome them. I do think they need to pay their way. Just because a business is allowed to come here, doesn't mean that we need to subsidize them. The idea of giving 30 million, 25 million, which currently is on the table for 25 million in free tax money, that will primarily come from our schools is a problem for me. Especially because the majority of the work that needs to be done is for roads and infrastructure that they need in order to conduct their business. Why is the county paying for that? And why are we doing that, especially now that we're trying to put full impact fees on homeowners who come in and want to build their home? So we're willing to put it on them, but we're not willing to put it on the businesses? That makes zero sense. Zero sense. This doesn't serve our taxpayers. I will tell you that I will support Mr. Roddy's amendment on the reallocation of the funding, and here's why. Only because I have a real problem with the fact that if you look at these numbers up on the screen, we're asking our schools to pay three times the amount of the funding instead of the biz, the, the entities that, that continue to make funding on this? That makes zero sense. Zero. I don't care who you are. That makes zero sense. If you're a conservative, makes zero sense.
Madam Chair.
I'm, I'm, I'm having my comments now. Ms. Hunter Huggett, you had your opportunity. We already have issues with traffic, with accidents, with deaths on our I-77 corridor. I think some folks think this is just relegated to this one area of Porter Road, which apparently is the south side that nobody cares as much about as some of the northern areas. I can tell you this right now. I, I think that we need to look out for our entire corridor, our entire corridor, our south side corridor and the rest of it. To give 25, 30 million dollars for a business that is going to be, bring tractor trailer trucks a day, 2,800 tractor trailer trips a day for only 165 jobs, and then also pay the full amount for them to do that? That makes no sense to me. We have never given an infrastructure credit, never given an infrastructure credit of this amount for any warehouse and distribution. And just to do this because it's a big company, because we think that it's going to attract other investment, because it's going to build additional roads to bring more vehicles? That makes no sense to me. And I want to say this, and I need to be very clear. If there was ever a company that I thought was, was straight up, there have been folks that have come to us that we have learned, don't share the truth. This company has. But the reality is, I feel like some folks have downplayed the impact this is going to have to our community. This is going to, this, this, this is going to have a huge impact. This is, this is an impact that our community will feel. In two years, when my son goes to work in Charlotte, and when your kids go to work up in Charlotte, they're going to feel this, because they're going to have 1,500 tractor trailer truck trips to deal with on this. And I welcome you here. I just don't think that we should give the funding. But if, if this council is, is committed to doing that, then I do think the funding should go where it should belong. And I think we should take it off of our school district's backs. And I think that the county and the city should have to pay for that, especially when the city makes additional funding through their utilities. And so I will support the current amendment, and I hope that the council will support the amendment on this. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. Raise your hand for the ayes. No?
No.
Amendment passes. We now go to the main motion. Any other discussion on the main motion?
I would just like to make one point that we were, that we don't just, well, we do a whole lot of giving away of taxpayer money. There are three felos included in the consent agenda. So, you know, we do a lot of taking away from a lot of different people and not giving them options, and we don't really do a lot of negotiations, but.
I'll add to that, too. So we, we can say we're taking money away from the school districts. Tonight, we voted on money for the school district. Our last meeting, we voted on money for the school district. And Rock Hill, they're picking up roughly 62% of the tax revenue. So every time we bring industry into York County, our school districts benefit from that. We're increasing their budget every time we bring a business into York County. I mean, that, that's a pretty good deal. Nobody's doing that for, for us, for York County. Nobody's really doing it. We're not benefiting the way they are. So I don't know. We, we can focus on one side, we can focus on the other. There's plenty of benefit the school district gets, and they're going to benefit, they would benefit from this deal, too, $9 million over the period of time. This was a huge benefit for the schools, huge benefit. We're not bringing in homes, we're not adding burden onto the schools. I said this was a, this is a very good opportunity for the schools.
I'll just say, this is a great deal. I'm glad we're able to lighten the load on our school districts and can't wait to see what we, new information that we do discover, because if, we are deferring the final read, correct?
No, they're still pending motion as amended.
Right. So we just did the percentages. That's why I was asking the question. That's why I was asking the question about how can we vote on Andy's motion, then vote on my motion?
Yeah, we voted that, we voted that down. We, we now have voted the amendment to the motion, and so the main motion will be to approve an incentive package of 25 million with the restrictions that Mr. Roddy has put in place. That's the main motion that we're now voting on currently.
So we just voted the deferral down?
Yes, we voted the deferral down. We voted to approve your amendment to the motion. And now the main motion is to approve 25 million tax incentive package with the allocations as presented by Mr. Roddy previously. That's the main motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Move now to. Move now to.
Madam Chair, you want to kind of explain, because I see some people kind of looking around like what just happened?
Basically, what was approved was approval of a $25 million tax incentive package to Costco to bring their investment here, which would cover the offsite investment, and that the allocation numbers would be 75, 50, and the remainder to the school district in order to lighten the load to the school district.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment? Ask a question? So, with Councilwoman, with Bupp's recommendation that we voted on, when will Rock Hill hear this?
They just heard it.
Yep. So, so what we have been told is that the council controls this, this issue. It is a council decision. If there, there is any opposition to that from the city of Rock Hill, then we will have to hear that afterwards, after the meeting. Okay? Alright, let's move now to our next public hearing item. Y'all got me all discompopulated. Here we go. Item number two. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 25-40, tax map number 571-0000006. To rezone from RMX 10 to RUD, 2.81 acres in District 2. Yes, sir.
So, this property is less than a mile south of the border with our neighbors in Gaston County, off Pull Branch Road near Lake Wiley. So, the applicant proposes to allow the operation of an agriculture produce stand on the property. You can see this site has a single-family dwelling, a sizable garden, storage units, as well as two access points off of Pull Branch Road. We kind of have the full palette of residential zones in this area. The subject property actually is RMX 10 and a Bupp's RUD property. Future land use, we expect the single-family detached homes between rural residential and single-family residential. And so staff recommends approval of the request with the condition that the applicant remove one of the curb cuts on Pull Branch Road and create a single access point to the property. The request altogether is consistent with the comp plan, future land use map, as lot is currently larger than what is expected in the RMX 10 zone, and the active use and characteristics align more closely with that within the RUD zone. By 7-0 vote, planning commission recommended approval with the above condition.
Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Thank you, sir. Anyone here wish to, wish to speak against this request? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to item number three. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 25-41, tax map number 484-0000003. Rezone from PD to GC, .14 acres in District 2.
This is a very small sliver, about 6,000 square feet off of the High Points intersection, the Five Points intersection. So the applicant proposes to incorporate this little sliver into the Westlake Village Shopping Center that's currently in development at that corner of the intersection. The image in the aerial is a bit old. The structure there has been demolished and the curb cut has been removed. Here's just an idea of what the Westlake Shopping Center's other properties are and what it's going to be incorporated with. Along Five Points are general commercial, and that aligns with our future land use map, which we expect to see community-serving business operations here. As such, we recommend approval of the request. It's consistent with the comp plan, future land use map. We'll remove an antiquated PED that was originally for special interest schools. It's actually a piano lessons school. And this will contribute to the cohesive commercial development along a major intersection. By 7-0 vote, planning commission recommended approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff? Alright, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Move now to item number four. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 25-42, tax map number 164-0000009. To rezone from AGC to RUD, 4.43 acres in District 3.
Yes, this property is about four acres off of White Wolf Road, out towards Kings Mountain. The applicant's looking to subdivide the lot, build an additional dwelling. The exact specifics of the subdivision are kind of just to bisect it in half and create another single-family home. Zoning, you can see this is a combination of rural development as well as AGC. And the future land use map reflects that as well, where White Wolf has kind of been designated as, where these two designations kind of meet and mesh. As such, we recommend approval, consistent with the comp plan, future land use map. Property is currently non-conforming. Again, it is about 4.43 acres, and AGC has a minimum of five. The request will conform to conforming RUD lots. That will kind of match the other RUD lots in the vicinity. By 7-0 vote, planning commission recommended approval.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the matter is approved. My understanding is, I don't know if this is correct, but I have items number five and six that the applications have been withdrawn. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Alright. As a matter of point of order, is there anything that council needs to do in order to, to effectuate the withdrawal of those or to take any action on that?
Just acknowledge the withdrawal.
Okay. So we're acknowledging withdrawal and on items number five and number six, rezoning. Move now to item number seven. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 25-45, tax map number 656-0000022. To rezone from RSF 40 to RSF 30, 1.9 acres in District 1.
Yeah, this is a relatively, as compared to the other lots in this area, a larger lot for residences outside Tugay, surrounded by Baxter Village. The applicant proposes to subdivide and build an additional dwelling. To note, where the current primary residence is, right in the center. To give the applicant some wiggle room, they offered to go to RSF 30. As, you know, with 1.9 acres, they could potentially create two conforming RSF 40 lots and meet that 40,000 square foot minimum. But, again, for wiggle room, and given that the dwelling is directly in the center, they might need to create two RSF 30 lots, one of them being within that 30,000, 40,000 range. So, again, this is Baxter Village. We see lots of residences here. And future land use reflects that with single-family residential as the primary designation. We recommend approval of the request as it's consistent with the comp plan, future land use map. Allowed use, scale, and character are that which is expected within single-family residential designation. And the size of lots created will be more in scale with those around it. By 7-0 vote, planning commission recommended approval.
Any questions for staff?
No.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Anyone in favor?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. Item number eight, in public hearing, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 25-47, tax map number 576-0000162. To rezone from UD to RMX 10, .32 acres in District 2.
Yeah, this is an undeveloped lot in the Herons Cove subdivision, just outside Lake Wiley, or just along Lake Wiley. The applicant proposes to build a detached single-family dwelling that kind of matches the style and character of the neighborhood on this undeveloped lot. As you can see, a lot of the subdivision has already been rezoned from UD to RMX 20. It was part of the UD rezoning project. And given that it's a subdivision, we expect to see single-family residential here. Staff recommends approval of this request. And while it is technically not consistent with the comp plan, future land use map, in single-family residential, we typically expect to see larger lot sizes. However, the allowed uses within UD are currently compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, given that it doesn't allow residences at all. And the requested RMX 10 zone is the only residential district that will accommodate a lot of this size, being about 14,000 square feet. By 7-0 vote, planning commission recommended approval.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Hi there. My name is Kristin Hansberger. I'm the owner of the lot, and my husband and I are planning on building a single-family residential home. We were informed throughout the building process and looking into permits, we were informed that many years ago, owners were given the opportunity to rezone this or have the zoning corrected to residential. We would like to ask the council to consider giving us the same courtesy to have that corrected instead of going through all the rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm confused. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this from public? Is there any, I do have a question for staff before we have the next motion. Is this something that, should we have needed to have a rezoning for this? I mean, did they have to pay for this rezoning? Or is this just to make them compliant now since they're in the UD that we're trying to phase out?
So, there is no fee for rezoning out of the legacy UD district. This is just a matter of, as it was an undeveloped lot and has been zoned UD from the start, when the rezoning project came through to rezone out of UD, I believe that was 2016?
Yes.
2015. Because it was an undeveloped lot without an owner, it wasn't part of the project.
Okay. So, so this, this will help them become compliant, and they aren't charged anything on that?
That's right.
Thank you, sir. You have any questions?
I was just going to say, wasn't it across the board, like you said, several years ago, that we stopped charging to rezone out of UD because we wanted to get rid of all those?
We have.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Alright. Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We already handled item number nine. We do not have any older new business committee and other reports. Planning and zoning committee, Chairwoman Debbie Collininger.
I try, I try to make this as short as possible. So I hope you guys don't go to sleep. Okay, so we met on November the 24th. It was myself and council members Tommy Adkins and Andy Litten. We talked about some industrial district uses. We did have some votes, and the first would be the committee voted 3 to 0 to request that an ordinance be drafted, adding trade services to the general commercial district as a permitted use. The next is the committee voted 3 to 0 to request that staff evaluate definitions of uses allowed in industrial districts where a next code might be added to help with clarity and bring examples to the committee for review. The committee voted 2 to 1 to request that an ordinance be drafted, adding building material and supply store, farm and garden supply with equipment, sales and service, vehicle service, repair, and customization without overnight storage. Parking areas and motor vehicle, recreational vehicle, or boat storage to the industrial development district. I think that second point about the next code, not sure about the vote on that. You might want to check on that, Karen, just to confirm that. Next, we have golf carts in Baxter Village. The committee voted 3 to 0 to present a draft ordinance to the full council with amendments allowing golf court, golf cart operation day or night and limiting crossing roads with posted speeds at 35 miles per hour or greater to signalized intersections. Then the split zoning. The committee voted 3 to 0 to request staff bring back a draft ordinance that implements the majority rules approach to, to split zone parcels. That's a mouthful. Which would govern a parcel by whichever zoning district has the most area. Okay. Nonconformities. The committee voted 3 to 0 to request staff bring back an ordinance expanding nonconforming residential uses to allow for larger replacements of manufactured homes. And we adjourn.
Thank you, ma'am. Justice and Public Safety Committee meeting. Chairman Tommy Adkins.
Alright. The Justice Public Safety Committee met on November 25th. Myself, councilman, members Thomas Odette and council member Watts Hucklebee were present. The committee received an update on one York Fire. We talked about the reassignment of four personnel to the two fire stations and continued operations of one mobile squad as part of a six-month pilot program. Four new fire engines were received. Held a pre-construction meeting for the new ladder truck, and we have received 12 of the 16 air compressors. Staff is continuing to work on the future opportunities. The committee received information regarding the Tier 2 reporting fees. Staff will create a fee structure and rates and adopt a cost recovery process. The committee voted 3 to 0 to direct the staff to draft an ordinance and present to the committee for review. The committee received an update on the five-year EMF plan. Staff will draft an EMS front tuts ordinance and present to hospital partners for their input. Staff will report back to the committee before presenting it to the full council.
Thank you, sir. We do have a citizen concern tonight. I'm going to butcher this. I'm very sorry. I think it's Ome Sama Rahmatullah, Executive Director of Food Share South Carolina, to address counsel regarding their program opportunities.
Thank you very much. And you said it perfectly. It's very phonetic because it's Arabic names, so it's transliterated. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you tonight. I've been told I have six minutes, and I will keep it at six minutes so we can all get out of here. As Chairwoman said, my name is Ome Sama Rahmatullah. I am the Executive Director of Food Share South Carolina. We're a statewide organization that provides produce at affordable and accessible ways for low-income families in our state. We also have a program called Veggie RX, and that's what I wanted to share with you today. I also want to acknowledge my colleagues and partners that are here today. We have Keja McKay, who is the clinic supervisor for Affinity Health, along with Ms. Charlene Hauser, House, who is a clinical health worker. And our hub partner here in York County is Hope, and the executive director, Tashika Thompson, is here. And Dr. Heather McCutcheon, the CEO of Affinity. And Dr. Heather McCutcheon, the CEO of Affinity Health, sends her apologies for not being able to attend today. So, I wanted to talk to you about our Veggie RX program. This is a produce prescription program aimed at reducing diabetes and food insecurity in the state and specifically here in York County. The food insecurity rate is 11% in this county. That is high. That's really high. That's higher than the national average. And 12.3% of the population is diagnosed with type II diabetes. And you would expect that twice that amount.
I don't normally do this, but I want to ask you.
Yeah.
Do you know, like, is there a sub-sector of the county where this is prevalent? Or that's a county-wide number? Do you know if it's concentrated?
I don't know specifically, but I can get you that information. But what we do know is the diabetes rate in South Carolina is more prevalent with African-American citizens, as well with low-income populations. So, it is a lifestyle disease, as we say, because it is impacted heavily by access to produce, right? Hypertension and diabetes are both diet-related diseases, and they afflict the low-income communities because produce is more expensive than over-processed foods, right? So, for example, if you have $5, if you're a single parent with two kids, you got $5 to spend on groceries for the night to feed yourself and your two kids, you can get an extra-large frozen cheese pizza that is full of chemicals. Or you can get a head of broccoli and two oranges, maybe. So, what's your choice, right? So, it's really about access. So, what we started is a Veggie RX program. It's part of a national movement called Produce Prescriptions, where we work with clinics. So, our partner here in York County is Affinity Health, to provide patients that are diagnosed with type II diabetes with free boxes of produce that are packed and sourced by Hope. And that's in York County. Across the state, we have seven other active clinics and have worked with 11 clinics since 2020. So, those are our clinics statewide. Here, Affinity Health is our biggest partner, and so we're really proud to be building on that partnership and presenting to you what we've been doing. We have 430 patients that have gone through the Veggie RX program since August 2022. And we've just recently piloted home delivery. Again, as I mentioned, diabetes and lack of produce is more prevalent in low-income families, which means they also have transportation barriers. So, if this fresh produce can come to their homes, they are more likely to eat it. Each of our boxes come with recipes and cooking tips. And so, what I really want to share now is the results of what we've seen doing this program for the past five years. We can go to the next slide. Oh, I can. Perfect. So, this is our larger statewide results. We're seeing really amazing reductions in hypertension. This is stolic and diastolic pressures have both gone down. We're also seeing great results in terms of weight loss. And this is only over six months. We see a bit more than two pounds reduction in weight. But what's really important there is that A1C level. From 8.3 to 7.6 is clinically shown to be a positive intervention in the medical literature. So, we're really encouraged to see just in six months that kind of reduction in A1C levels. Sure, y'all have some family with diabetes, so you know what the A1C is. But also, we are looking towards increasing food security in the county. As I mentioned, it's really high in York County. So, the food insecurity score of Veggie RX patients is reduced from 3.5 to 2.74, and that's out of a scale of four. And the total number of participants in the Veggie RX program who are food insecure increased from just half to 64%. And again, and that's a six-month intervention period. And the nutrition security score, which is another way of showing food security, but in terms of specifically nutrition, so not just access to food, but access to good food, has also gone up. And that is a four-point scale. And the average daily fruit and vegetable intake has also gone up through this intervention. And finally, the percent of patients who self-reported good health for the overall number of participants has increased from 34% to almost 55%. So, that's really encouraging to see in, again, such a short period of time, only six months. Yeah.
I would love to know. I would love to know. You mentioned that you have the produce boxes that you give out. Are any of our local farmers participating in that? Is that something that you?
Yes.
Compensate them for? How can we help?
Absolutely.
How can we help, you know?
Yes.
I love that.
Yeah.
I would love to know how to increase that.
Yeah. So, the way the produce, the boxes work is that the boxes for the Veggie RX are free. The rest of the participants pay for their box. We buy in bulk, and so we can reduce the rate. It's 18 pounds, nine to 11 varieties, and it's fresh. It's not like when you go to the food bank, it's leftovers. We're purchasing this. And it's $20 for an 18-pound box, or $5 if you have SNAP EBT, which the majority of our customers do. Each county runs their own hub program, and it's run by Tashika here, and she does source from local farmers. Do you have some of the names of the farmers?
Bush and Vine, and I didn't hear the other one.
Which is Cotton Farms.
Cotton Farms.
Yeah. And we always, for example, put bananas in the box. We can't, you know, get those locally, because what we're trying to do is provide a box that will feed... Well, they'll meet the produce needs of a family for two weeks. So, we like that variety, that diversity. Can't live on collards and peaches all the time. You know, so we always have a leafy green. We always have bananas. We always have an onion. We always have a tuber, and then the rest is in-season produce. And we try as much as possible to acquire or to procure from local farmers. We're actually putting in for more grants to have a local procurement person work with us. But all of our other produce is actually procured from Send Brothers, which is a family-owned aggregator here in South Carolina, and they operate out of the farmer's market off 77.
Fantastic. Thank you for presenting to the council. I would suggest that you connect with our Economic Development Director, Mitch Miller, who is also working with our local farmers, who could probably put you in touch with some other folks locally so that we can try and make sure that the services that we're providing are locally driven.
Mm-hmm.
And on behalf of the council, we thank you for the work that you're doing for our community. Barring any other questions, I want to say thank you.
I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is a great program.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving us the time.
And thank you for waiting until the end.
It was very interesting to hear, of course, though, I will say. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Before she leaves, I want to say something real quick. I'm good friends with Tashika... I mean, Tisha. I call her Keisha. And Charlene, and I've given some of my discretionary funds to that program here locally. So, good to see y'all coming back, showing what y'all do with the funds.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for what you do. Do we have any council member, non-agenda comments before our executive session?
Yeah, I've got one quick one here. I just want to make sure to go ahead and do a referral to staff in order to get the golf cart amendment that was approved, the draft ordinance for Baxter Village, add it on to our next council meeting.
Was that included in the committee meeting?
Yes, and the committee...
Committee's already passed on that.
Committee voted out, so it will be on the...
It'll follow the regular process.
With legal and others to get it on the agenda as soon as possible.
Okay. Follow the process of mine.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. I have one. Okay. So, last week, I had a very unusual request from a friend of mine that her dear, sweet husband threw away in the trash at the dumpster a very valuable article valued probably around $800. We have three heroes from our Public Works Department who met them on Tuesday morning at, in Fort Mill, at the convenience center, and... Wait, on Wednesday. I'm sorry, on Wednesday, because it was their day off. They came on their day off. And I had visions of these people having to jump in this dumpster and rummage and rummage. It only took them 10 minutes to recover this.
That's amazing.
And so, I just want to thank the two men and woman who came to the rescue of a good friend of mine, and she wants to thank them also. So, we are the heroes. Yay.
It's a good story.
Good Thanksgiving story.
It is.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Congratulations to Northwestern High School. They won the upper state championship. They're playing in the state championship this coming Friday against Ermo down in Orange Park at South County State. Bless you.
What about South Point? What about South Point, ma'am?
He knew it. That's where I was going. He knew that's where I was going. Now, I graduated from Northwest. I'm proud of them as well, but...
I'm a Bearcat, but I'm paying attention.
I do the announcing over at South Point, so I'm extremely excited about them going to the state this year. I think they got one of the best announcers in the state. Y'all should really come here on Friday night. But yeah, hopefully both of those teams will come back Saturday with the two-state championship.
We represent very well. We're very proud of our community, and we have so much to be thankful for and so much talent here.
Yes. One more. I'm sorry. Nations Ford... No, not Nations Ford.
Catawba Ridge.
If you were watching the Macy's Day Parade, which I happened to turn on right when they were on the TV, and they were... They did such a fantastic job. But the reason why I said Nations Ford, because this is how you work a community. You just love those kids. The Nations Ford band all chipped in and made little bags, to-go bags, for all the Catawba Ridge kids. Like, they had, you know, candy and, you know, just a little goodie bag for them to have. And I thought that was really sweet of Nations Ford to band to do that for Catawba Ridge. Good community bonding there. Thank you to both.
I swear, I'm just glad water pipes didn't bust. Let's go to the executive session.
Gosh, knock on wood. All right. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, we do. Receipt of legal advice, legal matters, litigation update, and then also receipt of legal advice, contractual matter, interstate exchanges.
Can we also add just personnel update? Personnel update.
Also, personnel update.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll go into executive session. Any opposed? Hearing done. We'll go into executive session.
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?